Welcome to the September 15th meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. My name is Maggie Sharon and I call this meeting to order at 6:33 PM. This open meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020. Information about how to join our remote school committee meetings and our meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and be aware that anything that you broadcast might be captured by the recording. We're going to begin, I believe, with public comment. One word about public comment, hang on a second. We're going to begin with public comment and I am going to reserve the right to stop public comment after 20 minutes. So it's 6:34 and at 6:54 I'm going to ask that we wrap it up just because we have our business to conduct tonight and, you know, if we do public comment all evening, it's going to be hard for us to get our business done in a reasonable timeframe. That being said, community comment is an opportunity for our members of the community to be heard. We respectfully request that you make your comments brief and that you move our discussion forward by adding new information. Please try to avoid repeating points that have already been made. For community comments, please virtually raise your hand in Zoom and wait to be called on. When you speak, please begin by stating your name and whether you live in Dover Sherburne or Boston. Community comments are an opportunity for the school committee to listen to members of the community. It's not a forum for answering questions or engaging in debate, so just be aware, we are not going to be answering questions during community comment tonight. Once public comment of the section of the meeting has been concluded, we will move on to our other business and unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. This is standard operating procedure across all three of our school districts. So at this time, I just wanted to ask, is there any community comment? And if you are interested in making a comment, if you could just please use the raise hand Okay, I don't see any hands raised. If I've missed you somehow and you want to just unmute yourself and identify yourself, if you'd like to make a comment at this time. Okay, hearing none. I'd like to move on to the next item on our agenda. Hang on, I just need to pull that up.
Assistant Superintendent Report.
Perfect, thank you, I really appreciate that. Mrs. McCoy.
On my screen?
Certainly.
Thank you. Oh, John, let me know when you're ready. Okay. All right, so I thought in order to touch on the bullet points that I promised I would address this evening, I would start by showing you the presentation that I did for all of the faculty when we came back together at the beginning of our 10 days of preparation. So obviously, it was on Zoom and once again, I tried to model, you know, what a class period could look like on Zoom. So we started with a warm-up in the chat box. We asked our teachers if Hollywood were to make a movie about your life since March 12, what would it be the title and who would play you? It was a great way for people to kind of lighten up and be creative and there was lots of excellent responses. The objective of this first meeting with the faculty and for the following nine days was to make sure that our educators had the training, the tools, and the time to plan for a successful year of hybrid and remote learning. So this is kind of how we all felt in the spring when we were thrown into emergency remote learning. We were, you know, the target was changing, the expectations of how we should be using the time, whether it was for social emotional wellness or academics kept changing. And in the meantime, there was email after email after email as people were sharing resources, everybody well-intentioned, every industry wanting to get our business, and it was just completely overwhelming. So the goal was to make sure that this fall, we didn't feel like this and that we are in a much more comfortable and confident place. So from the point of March 12, we had 61 days of remote learning that provided us lots of experience. Over the summer, we supported 230 workshop days where teachers collaborated together on a number of different topics, whether it was technology, cultural responsiveness, literacy, developing units for hybrid and remote learning. And we also provided access to 19 different courses so that teachers could be better prepared to engage in blended learning, virtual learning, universal design for learning to make sure that all of our students could access the material, Google Classroom, CSO, how to do assessments online, all those sorts of things. We also, as you know, had our subcommittee of the Teaching and Learning Task Force come together and included 56 members of our faculty and seven parents. And so between the learning that we did in the spring and over the summer, these great minds came together and developed a vision for what remote learning 4.0 would look like. As you know, we went through stages one, two, and three in the spring, so this is really our fourth iteration of remote learning. So our goals this year, when people ask, how will hybrid and remote learning be new and better and different? We're going to continue to focus on the safety and social emotional wellness of our students and faculty as well as keeping equity at the forefront of all that we do. We want to make sure that we continue to support all learners and as I mentioned before, Kate McCarthy and Student Services have really done a lot of work thinking about how do we support the academic component of students, the social emotional component of students, both in school and at home. Consistency is one of our goals in that when students and parents go to log in and find their work, it's easy to find on our learning management system, whether that be CSO or Google Classroom, and that the assignments and expectations are clearly outlined and easy to find with just a few clicks. Contact time, we heard loud and clear was something that we needed to address coming out of the spring. So if you look at the schedules for elementary, middle, and high school, it's much more clearly defined how many times teachers will be Zooming with their students and how often and when during the school day. So each student, whether it's elementary or high school, will have multiple contacts with an adult throughout the day to create much more of a kind of eight to two or nine to three learning experience. Focus curriculum is obviously still important. While the commissioner is hoping that we meet all of the curriculum standards this year, we think that's a little bit unreasonable, so we're asking our teachers to think about, again, those power standards or those prerequisite standards that our students really need for the next level or that cross multiple disciplines. Engaging activities, we spent a lot of our time this summer and in the 10 days of preparation talking about how to engage learners across the screen. Obviously, you know, working in groups is more difficult, having them do games is more difficult. So how do we use tools and apps such as Padlet, Jamboard, WeVideo, NearPod to get students engaged in the learning and get some back and forth with each other and the teacher so the teacher can assess if they're meeting the objectives of the lesson? Alternative assessments, as you know, we can't have the same types of assessments at home on the computer that we would in a typical classroom. So teachers have done a lot of thinking and research about what online assessments could and should look like. And I know there's been thoughtful consideration as to how we use our remote time to check in on kids and their learning and how we use our in-person time to check in on students and their learning. And while it would be very tempting to use our in-person time for tests and quizzes, we really would prefer that students Monday and Tuesday in school not become two days full of just tests, so we're being mindful of that. Faculty collaboration, it has been amazing since day one and it continues to really just be outstanding. We see teachers, you know, obviously working across grade levels and departments as they always have, but now we're seeing teachers work across schools. The tech integrators, K through 12, have really been working together all summer and sharing resources and videos and materials. We have high school teachers talking to middle school teachers about apps. Pine Hill and Elementary are so much on the same page and continue to work together, not only around remote learning but around literacy, which is really exciting. Predictable communication, we know that it's important that parents and families are made aware of what's happening with our students, what's happening in the classroom, what's happening in the school in the district, but how do we do that in a way that doesn't inundate them with information and in a kind of timely and predictable fashion? And lastly, a goal is self-care and boundaries. You know, we all experienced in the spring, regardless of what field we're in, just the fact that days ran into nights, nights ran into weekends, we found ourselves working 24/7. So how do we preserve ourselves so that we can be the best educators or the best doctors during our time on duty without burning out in the long run? So those being the goals and the training that we had already done, in terms of expectations, our work with the MOU group, we were able to put together kind of the nuts and bolts of how many Zooms, when, when will work go out, et cetera? And so that gave everyone kind of the foundational expectations, but of course, in terms of teaching and learning, which is the exciting part, we wanted to make sure that our teachers had the best tools. So as I showed that image earlier of the fire hydrant, thanks to the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee and many of our educators, we kind of culled all that information, embedded it, and took out the most poignant articles and resources around curriculum, instruction, assessment, technology, social emotional learning, and created this flipbook. So instead of teachers having to go through multiple emails and multiple websites, they could just come here. So for example, under curriculum, you'll see an article and different tools on how to identify those that are most important. And under assessment, again, there's videos, there's access to different types of assessments and how to kind of launch them in the classroom, how to conduct student conferences, and then a couple of websites that have projects and standardized performance tasks already, you know, linked to the Massachusetts standards that people can take and adapt in their own classroom. Tools, again, our tech collaborators work together to develop this slide deck, which includes the top 20 apps. So coming out of the spring, we asked our educators, which apps did they use, did they find most helpful, which ones would they like to continue to use, you know, in the fall or recommend to their colleagues? So here are our lists and it continues to grow. And then associated with each of these blocks, you can click on it and there is a slide created by one of our tech integrators that gives a quick overview of what the tool is, a quick demo and some samples from teachers in the district. So you'll see that for Padlet and for Remote as well as all the others. And then the time, so we had the training, we have the tools between the notebook and the top 20 apps, now the time. So this is an overview of the 10 days that we had together. You'll see the blue was week one, the yellow was our four-day week because of Labor Day, and then yesterday was our Monday before we launched the opening of school. It was organized so that there were kind of more formal trainings first thing in the morning that were district-wide. And then the school-based teams had time from 9:00 to 11:00 to address things that were school-specific. So obviously, on the first day, they had a faculty meeting. On the second day, the members of the Teaching and Learning Task Force that had worked with CSO and Google Classroom in designing the assignment templates presented on what those should look like and provided support to their colleagues. Throughout the rest of the week, the principals inserted into the 9:00 to 11:00 slot things that were school-specific. So this is kind of the district view, but for example, the middle school had run-throughs of a day, a cohort A schedule, a cohort B schedule. There were opportunities for departments to meet together, grade-level teams to meet together, there are opportunities for teachers to get together and practice, you know, what it would be like to have a lesson in the classroom while also streaming homes, they could work out the kinks there. So that time was filled in by the buildings. From 11:00 to 12:00, all those wonderful apps that you just saw, there were links here so that the teachers could sit either in groups or independently, click on these links and see demos of each of the apps to see, you know, what they feel they would like to use in their classroom, what they're comfortable with, what they'd like to practice. In the afternoon, there was opportunity for people to check in with their nurses and ask questions and get advice. From 12:00 to 3:00, it was kind of open time, so teachers could take all of the tools and all of the training and all of the conversation that they had and kind of have some independent planning time if they so chose, or they could work, you know, in teams if they wanted to. Here are links to all the PD that happened this summer, if they wanted to go back and look at something again, or if they didn't do a PD and they wanted a couple ideas, they could do that there. You know, as many of us know, we can sit in meetings all day and that's great and we can have some great conversation and learn a lot of things and collaborate with our colleagues, but then, you know, at 4:00 we say, I didn't get any work done. So we wanted to make sure that educators had time to get their work done and get their planning done and their lessons in place and their Google Classroom set up, so that was the 12:00 to 3:00 time. And that being said, there was an optional tech help time built into the 2:00 to 3:00 slot where educators could log in either at the elementary level or the secondary level and meet with their tech integrator and ask any sort of question that they had and work through at that point. The goal being, you saw the fire hydrant at the beginning, the goal was that everybody would leave these 10 days feeling a little bit more collected and ready and able to find joy in learning this fall. The end of our session, we talked about how we would measure the success of our learning model. We used a Jamboard to do that, where teachers got together in small groups and breakout rooms over Zoom and posted their ideas so that we could take them back and then use them as a gauge for whether or not our model's working. Things that came up are student attendance would be a measure of success, the interactivity of students between each other and the teacher, the relationship buildings, obviously, a high level of work production, not only in quantity but also in quality, that we see more formative assessments over summative assessments, that we see students grow in independence and their ability to navigate their work. And my favorite, I think, was laughter, that, you know, through all this, we need to make sure that the kids are happy and well-balanced and having fun. Now to tie this all together, as you know, our teachers have to set goals for the year, so knowing all that they did in the spring through experimental learning, all that they did in the summer for preparation, and all that they're going to be doing this year, launching their new hybrid and remote classrooms, we did set a goal that they could use if they'd like because they're going to be doing the work anyways, so they might as well get credit for it and be able to shine in their evaluations. And then other business, and of course, ended with an exit ticket for feedback on, did we meet the objective of the workshop and what else did they need? So that is the majority of my presentation. I was also asked to talk about devices and standardized assessments, so if I could just touch on those for a moment. At this point, all of our faculty have their new laptops and are working through the opportunities there between the touchscreen and the increased capacity. Our students, thanks to you all at the middle school, have their one-to-one devices in hand. They all came home with their big boxes today, it was like the holidays at the middle school. And so because we are able to give the middle school students their new devices, their more-used devices went to grades three through five and nine through 12. So basically, grades three through 12 now have a device in their hands that they will be bringing back and forth to school. And the older the student, the more opportunity they have to choose their own device and use theirs from home if they wish. The only thing outstanding are the iPads that were waiting for grades K through 2, but they will be coming soon and they'll be in the hands of our kids and ready to work with CSO in no time. And then in terms of standardized assessments, just an update, thanks to Ellen Scheidman and the high school crew, we'll be offering the SAT to Dover Sherburne seniors on October 14th in school. We're doing that because our own September administration on a Saturday was canceled as well as many in the area, so we wanted to make sure that our seniors had access to the SAT, so we'll be doing that during school time. That Saturday, October 17, we're offering the PSAT to all juniors at DS. And then looking at the calendar from the College Board, we are noticing that there are opportunities for students to take the SAT starting in December and January, obviously dependent on what happens with the virus. And then depending on where we are in March, we might be able to offer them again at DS, but that's kind of the update of the standardized test. So I am open to any questions, I'm out of breath because I'm asleep. I'm happy to answer any questions or take any advice.
Well, first, you know, we'll certainly take questions, but I do want to second here the out of breath, but what that suggests is that you guys have been very busy over the last two weeks and it seems like there's really been a lot of thoughtful and meaningful work done that, you know, in any situation, even if we weren't in this kind of weird alternative reality right now, it seems like there's a lot of good learning and a lot of good growth that's gone on with your whole community of educators. And so thank you for taking the time that obviously went into getting such a robust and also interesting and yet sort of well-paced plan together to make the best use of folks' times. For our, what are our members' questions, comments, thoughts? Anne.
Thanks, Maggie. And thank you, Beth, I really appreciate that. I have a number of friends who are educators in other districts and when they are hearing about, and I didn't even know half the stuff you were doing, and I was talking with them about, they're like, oh my goodness! So I think that you're well ahead of the game and thank you so much. My quick question is, you talked about the power standards, and are those going to be what you use to assess students' progress as opposed to what was the usual?
Yeah, and I don't want you to think that we're taking away pieces of the curriculum. I think we're taking the pieces of the curriculum that are most important and instead of going kind of a mile wide and an inch deep, we're trying to sink in more to topics that we know that are important either because they're interdisciplinary, they're important for, you know, the next level, whether it's English 11, or we realize that those skills and that information is going to last long beyond, you know, a standardized test. So yes, those are the skills that we're going to be measuring to see students' progress throughout the year.
And can I just really quickly follow up? So then for students with special needs, because they don't get quite as much of the in-person contact, are there different ways of assessing if they're getting what they need?
Sure, so that's where the idea of modifications come in. So if a child is receiving a modified curriculum or accessing a modified curriculum, then their assessments would be modified as well to meet whatever the expectation is. Luckily, in our district, many of our students have accommodations and very few modifications, but obviously, our special educators do their best to, you know, meet the needs of the kids, make sure that they're learning but also not discouraged, and collaborate with our general educators to make sure that the content knowledge is meeting the students where they're at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from the members?
And if I might just, Anne, to follow up, one of the things that came out of the spring was a parent, you know, parents wondering, well, how can I know what these standards are? And so I'm in the process of updating the website, you know, it's on the list to do, that just keeps going, but I do want to make sure that parents are clear about what the power standards are, so when they're supporting their kids from home, they know kind of what target and what to focus on. So that's a reminder to me that I need to do that. I'm sorry, Michael.
No worries, Michael.
Not at all. Thanks, Maggie. Beth, I mean, I know that everybody is still a little bit drinking through the fire hose and trying to keep up with the changes that are occurring daily. How do you anticipate going forward capturing some of the really great initiatives that we wouldn't want to get rid of once the pandemic clears?
I think that's a great question, and I think a lot of the time that faculties will be spending together at faculty meetings, department meetings, grade-level meetings, you know, our November Day, if that comes to fruition after Thanksgiving, will be sharing what we've learned. And we have, you know, some educators that have, you know, caught up to speed with, okay, now I know Google Classrooms, now I know Google Docs, now I know Google Forms, and that's a great kind of foundational point, and we have others who are eons beyond that. So I think a lot of sharing, I shared with Andrew an article today that I thought was really powerful in that, you know, how do we measure student learning and what do we really want to capture? And, you know, as we start to think about what do standardized assessments tell us, although important for the college application process, perhaps we should be looking at the kinds of tasks students are doing and what they're producing. So I'm hopeful that we can start to take some of the assignments that students are doing either in class or online and looking at them as grade levels and departments to say, you know, what standard is it linked to, what are the students being asked to do, is it higher level, you know, is it rigorous, and hanging on to those assignments moving forward? And then I think that's really an important question that you ask because I would hate for June to come, us close the door and then all of a sudden go back to learning 1.0. And I think, you know, as we go throughout the year, we kind of have to update that flipbook that I created and then say, these are things that we're going to keep as we move forward and kind of create our own document as a district.
Thank you. And perhaps it would be, or maybe it's a question, would it be helpful if we're able to revisit in a school committee meeting sometime later in the year to perhaps debrief on some of these points so we can kind of gather up and maybe get some momentum going for the following year?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Any other? Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm like slowly switching over to the other computer, which appears not to have a camera, so if this one dies, then it'll just be a blank space. Then in that case, we'll move on to Dr. Kea. Thank you so much, Mrs. McCoy, like really, this has been incredible work, thank you.
Well, thank you, Maggie, and thank you, Beth. I can't say enough about the work that Beth and really the entire leadership team has done in preparation for our opening. You know, the proof is always in the pudding and we had a really, really smooth opening. Now granted, at the region, we had a reduced number, but in some ways, that was a positive thing, a reduced number in person because it allowed for us to really focus on those kids. But to hear the teachers talking to Beth as she passed in the hallway as we walked through the halls, thanking her for the types of technology and new learnings that they were involved with this summer was really, really encouraging because those things don't go away. These are teaching skills that will stick with these people who are already excellent teachers for many years to come. I also noticed that John had spent some time this afternoon asking his teachers about, you know, basic questions, what worked today, what didn't. Of course, they're remote at the high school, but the feedback was excellent. And what was really enlightening to me was in fact how often teachers referred to this new technology and these new platforms and how far I think they've come. I think they were basically saying that it went better than they thought. Now, there were instances, of course, where people were saying it's been bumpy and it's been challenging, and that's fine. But the good news is that, you know, we have introduced a lot of new technology, all of the teachers have new laptops, a lot of new technology, and we had questions, you'll recall, people were asking, will our infrastructure hold up? And it has thus far, so I'm really happy about that. The opening day itself was just, there's no way to really adequately capture what it feels like, at least for me, but I was just so proud because people have really, really knocked themselves out and they did it with one purpose in mind, and that was getting our kids back into school because they need to be back with each other and with their teachers. And to see that was really, it was emotional. And I'm just so proud of this group of people, our leadership team and the reopening task force and all of you. You know, we worked hard, you guys know it. This was not your typical summer, we worked really, really hard, and to see it all come together was just so impressive. I'm going to try and keep it brief tonight because you've heard so much from us last week, but... But but I did want to mention that besides the fact that we had a smooth opening, some struggles, albeit with the drop off in longer lines than I think we anticipated at the front entrance, really the student parking lot entrance over by the middle school. And that has to do with the fact that we can't just enter everyone into the building in the same location or we will have bottlenecks. And so where we, you know, these are logistical things that we have to work out. All things considered, our transportation really went well. I would say, you know, based on the number of calls we received, it went better than ever. That said, it was a smaller number and and perhaps people were just being kind because they know we've been working very hard. But I don't know if there's anything you would add on to the transportation thing since you've really taken the lead on that?
It's a different, it's sort of a different event this year because keep in mind, we have assigned bus seats, a seat assignment, so that we've told parents that if they haven't, if they didn't sign up for transportation, we will not be sort of taking new requests to change those options for two weeks because we just need to let it settle. And the seating charts are being shared with the nurses for contact tracing. So they're really important documents this year. So I don't think we've had, I don't think we missed anyone today that thought they had signed up and weren't. So that was really reassuring to us. And our bus drivers, I will have to say, were as excited as the kids were to be back on the road. We had a bus meeting with them on Friday and they were just so excited to be back to work. So I think that was great to see them on the road. And I don't know if you saw them on Monday, we had them all do a trial run just to make sure that people knew that we had buses and that it was going to work and that worked out great because I think it got them back behind the wheel, got them back on their routes and it made today much smoother. So we're happy here. We're going to get a good night's sleep tonight and hope that we can sleep on Wednesday night before Thursday morning rolls around.
Thank you for everything with that, Dawn. It was one of the things that's a challenge that folks at home might not necessarily think of is that with fewer students, the stops are shorter. So you have to, it's hard to calculate, well, if this was a 10-student stop, but now it's two, how many minutes am I actually shaving off of this route and how is that going to impact my arrival time? You know, five stops down the road. So those are just natural kinks. I really think that we'll work those out. It will be interesting when we include the high school students, but because that will throw drivers into the lot as well. So, you know, we're not out of the woods, but we're feeling really, really good. And I think it's a true testament to the energy that people have put into this. The other thing, two things that I wanted to mention is that tomorrow, actually, the engineers will be visiting the region and assessing our HVAC systems at the middle and high schools. So this is an important step for us. We feel confident, our own contractors have told us several times over that our systems are in great operating condition. But we also believe in the suggestion made by Dover Board of Health that we, just to be safe, have our HVAC systems assessed by an independent organization. And so that's set up for tomorrow. The engineers will be visiting and we're looking forward to seeing what they have to say. Dawn, did you, I believe you mentioned last week, there'll be a shorter initial assessment and then a longer one at the end of the month. Is that correct?
Yeah, the shorter, the draft assessment we'll have by the end of September and then the more detailed report later in October.
Okay, great. And then the last thing I wanted to, or the last two things I wanted to mention was that, as you know, athletics begin on the 21st. Emily Sullivan, our AD is having a mandatory coaches and athletes meeting tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock. It's a hugely important meeting when you consider the large percentage of our students who are athletes for them to get a uniform message about what our expectations are in terms of student conduct in and out of the school, especially athletes that can be very influential in their peers. So I'm going to attend that as well. I think it's a really important meeting. It's an important meeting for John as well to kind of set the tone. So I'm very pleased with that idea. I wanted to mention this evening that our Metco transportation went very well. I know that we've had questions from school committee members, concerns about all of this. And the response from Monique was that all of the kids made it in and it went very smoothly. So that was very exciting. Just a reminder, this is a new start time for us. So it was different and on top of everything else, we actually have managed that. So again, kudos to everyone who made that happen. And finally, I included in your packet, the new staff for the middle school and high school. We have some great, great new people. As you know, when we hire, it's not just Scott or John, you know, interviewing these people. We bring in teams of people to sit down with our candidates and often have them teach sample lessons. So this was, this was obviously a difficult year for hiring. When I speak to my superintendent colleagues, many of them are still looking for teachers. We have filled out all of our spots across our three systems. So that's really, really good news and I'm super happy about that. So that's really in a nutshell where we are. I don't want to belabor it other than to say thank you to everyone who made this such a smooth opening day. To note, we have another opening day on Thursday with our second cohort and really technically a third opening day on the 21st with our high school students when they'll be in person. So we have to rev ourselves up for that, but I think we're going to be fine.
Well, thank you so much again to Dr. Kio, to the entire team of administrators and teachers and everybody who came together to make this happen today. I experienced our own first day in the neighboring school district where we welcomed some students in. And I'm sure maybe some people felt like I did, like the scene from Beauty and the Beast, when the different, you know, objects that had become objects were like, it's a human! We were so excited to see the children in our buildings and I'm so grateful that you guys got that experience today. What questions or comments do we have from committee members? I see Judy stand up.
Yeah, I was just wondering, you mentioned the Boston students. And just out of curiosity, is the traffic, are the traffic patterns any different now that so many people are working from home? And is that going to help us? Are we able to utilize that or is that just irrelevant? And you can say it's irrelevant and I would be offended.
No, I actually think it's having a huge impact, Judy. I did not ask Monique that specific question about the Boston students, but I know that it's having an impact in Dover and Sherburne. We are major commuter routes to Boston and the numbers are down. So if there is a silver lining, and I wish it were for other reasons, people are not heading into town as much as they typically do. And so I'm extrapolating from that, that the same holds true for Boston and the Metco route. Dawn may know more than I do. I haven't had a chance to ask Monique that specific question.
So I did talk to Monique today and just checked in with her. I think it's too soon to say. They're still trying to figure out with the change in the school start time, what schools are going to first. So I think she's playing around with that a little bit. And so they're careful about how late they leave, but I think they're going to play, they're going to experiment a little bit, figure out what we need to do. I think that we do have one of the cohort days where we don't actually have to hit both elementaries, which is a huge time save that they'll be able to incorporate once that's all settled and we can really see how it plays out. So she was super excited about how today went. Jackie, their regular bus monitor is still with us and the kids, as we all were, were thrilled to be coming back. So and Scott, I think, and John will talk about the, you know, the children or the students that we're hosting here now in the morning where it was the elementaries on the other last year. So there's a lot going on with that. But as for our first day, Monique was smiling from ear to ear. So that made us all happy.
Thank you. That's great.
Are there any other questions from the board members?
I don't know. I don't know if it's going to be discussed later or because I don't want to go out of order. But on the topic of the September 21 opening, is there, is there an, can you explain why the, I mean, the thing that jumped out to me was, it was, I don't know the number of days, but it wasn't sort of the standard 14-day waiting period between, well, maybe it is and I'm counting wrong, but I just wanted to get an understanding of how we picked September 21. I guess that's, that's the question.
So we went off of, off of the Board of Health's recommendations. I see Matt is here with us and he can probably summarize that discussion. My understanding was it really had a lot to do with them trying to balance the importance of getting our kids back and factoring in things like incubation periods and whether or not we would know whether someone was sick as a result of attendance at the party. And if they were, we would obviously then extend out to the 14 days. But Matt, could you summarize kind of how that went, if you don't mind?
Absolutely. I'm just glad you didn't say briefly. So now I've really got free rein. So, you know, I think this is an area where we actually don't have any guidance from the state. So if we just went by state guidance, there would be kind of no, no change in school attendance. I think that as we look at the emerging patterns coming out of Dedham, we certainly see some of these super spreader events from kind of large high school parties or other things. And so we were concerned that not taking some action would be problematic. I think the important distinction here is that in this population so far, there are no cases. And so the 14 days would really be the standard of if there's a case in the cohort, then you would consider it close contacts and say, we need to quarantine for that period of time. When we look at the typical incubation period for COVID, in general, it's kind of two to five days is typical, but there's a long tail where there have been some cases on that 14-day side. So the way I would think about it is if we have members of that sort of party cohort, whether they're in Dover, Sherburne or in other towns that do turn positive for COVID, I think we probably need to reassess and potentially push it back to that full 14 days, given the difficulty in determining who in the party attendance would be considered a close contact. And so that was kind of the logic to say, if there's a group of 100 to 150 people with a typical incubation period of COVID, if it's going to kind of come to be evident in that, in that group, that that would likely happen within, in that time span. And I think as Andrew mentioned, it was really trying to find the balance between exercising additional prudence beyond what the state had provided thus far, but also wanting to support our students in being able to get back in school and to try to, you know, tread the needle. But happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you.
If I may follow up with you, Matt. The, to the extent there is a lack of reporting by families slash students of being in attendance and also there's a certain percentage of asymptomatic carriers. Is there a concern that this is something that may be kind of lurking in the background that doesn't come to the attention of the boards of health or the county because there's a lack of testing or self-reporting? Or asymptomatic or a combination of all three of those?
No, I think that's a great question, Michael. I think it's definitely one of the concerns. And I think as we kind of talked and thought through it together, there was nothing that we landed at that you could say, aha, I'm totally confident this is perfect. I think that what we ended up was sort of a pragmatic compromise in terms of thinking through, how do we minimize risk by avoiding having kind of congregate gathering in that window of time? I don't know that we can know that there, let me put that another way. Every time we have people walk through the doors of a building, there's always a risk that somebody could be an asymptomatic carrier. And so I think that's part of why we have all of these strategies to make the system as resilient as we can and know one strategy will take care of all of it. So we've got masking, we've got distancing, we've got symptom screening, we've got cohort size management, we've got ventilation assessment that Dr. Kio described. I think the thing we are worried about is that if you have a big, high load, it's making, it's sort of making you count on the resilience. So you may be on the tight rope, but you don't want to jump on the net. And so I think that's what we were trying to do in giving a reasonable chance of identifying cases if they're present within that group of students, whether it's in our district or elsewhere, while recognizing that while the, a kind of party or a moment in time feels really concrete, like this is where all of our risk comes from. Across the board, we have risks coming from lots of different things every day. And so we felt like this strategy managed that risk in a way that was prudent and kind of brought it commensurate with the other kinds of risks we see, whether that's youth sports, high school athletics, you know, church attendance, lots of different things bring risk. And so we're just trying to bring it from this elevated risk to something that's more consistent with the general background. And I think that, you know, it's hard to know for sure that there's some exact spot that accomplishes that, but that was what we were striving for.
Were there other questions from board members? Okay. Well, thank you so much. Thank you for, Dr. Kio, thank you to Dr. Vitale and Dr. Peterson and to our, to our, both of our boards of health for watching out for us and continuing to keep an eye on us and take good care of us. I think, like all things, it's important that we're all watching out and taking care of one another in the next few weeks. The headmaster's reports, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Sharon and members of the regional school committee. In my report, I had outlined a number of kind of some key components and certainly can answer some questions. So today we started our classes, albeit remote. And obviously we were disappointed by that because people had worked incredibly hard and our faculty as well. But we also felt as though the schedule and all the hard work we had done this summer allowed us to pivot pretty well and we were ready for a number of different scenarios if we had to go remote for a number of different reasons. So that being said, we met with faculty yesterday. We talked it through a bit. What was it going to look like? What was going to be most important? And I'm really pleased overall. Our first day feedback was very positive. The kids were thrilled to see the teachers. The teachers were thrilled to see the kids. Many of our teachers indicated that they even got some help on a couple little minor glitches with the technology because as we know, these young people are incredibly savvy. But they were also patient, you know, as we worked through things. I received two or three calls from parents just saying, wow, my son reported that the remote learning was totally different. It was much more advanced. It was ramped up. It was really cool and we were using a lot of neat apps. And, you know, I think, Michael, to your point about, you know, the momentum, I think really this is going to change a lot of the ways that we teach. So on the real micro level, you know, looking at something such as the Google classroom and how we're all using that across the board and creating some continuity. But then it's all these different apps and ways in which even when we are in person, we can be using, you know, and that's obviously our ultimate goal is to get back to eventually five days of school in-school. But we can still use these tools, which is really exciting. And we can incorporate them into various assessments as Ms. McCoy had indicated. You know, I think this is going to push our teachers to look more at formative assessment because they have these quick opportunities where sometimes prior to that, you know, time was limited and you looked at end of the unit exams, which will still be used. But we feel as though it's an opportunity and it's it's a, it's an opportunity and it's ironic because one of the things that through our NEASC goals that we looked at was the growth mindset. That was one of our goals that we identified. And so I see it as a silver lining in what has been obviously a terrible pandemic is the growth mindset of the administration, the faculty, students, everybody. So overall, a very good day. We had opportunities to touch base with some kids and some teachers and I'm also going to be a proctor for one of our remote teachers. So I had the opportunity as a co-teacher to jump in on one of the Google Classroom sessions and it was so neat. I was put into a breakout group and I think once the kids understood that, okay, this is okay, that Mr. Smith's here. You know, they were great. They were interacting. And one kid said to me, Mr. Smith, so what do you think about that phrase? And I said, okay, now I am on my toes and I better make sure that I'm ready. So we were encouraged by that. We were really excited. It was great. Our kids are absolutely awesome. They're chomping at the bit to get back into their schoolwork. Our teachers are excited and passionate about that. So you know, we'll continue to work through some of our bugs and some of our, our things, but I don't think it'll be for, you know, a lack of, of hard work and effort. I can't thank Ms. McCoy enough for the structural organization of all of this and putting that together. Because it gave us all really kind of a, a strong direction. A lot of the decisions that were made were made, you know, with teachers at the table. So this is really a collaborative effort. We're also really excited and proud that for our teachers who are going to be remote, that we've got, you know, high quality proctors in there. Ms. Keegan's going to be doing it, Mr. Butterworth, as well as teachers from the respective departments. So we have all highly certified people helping out in those classes, which we think is going to be fantastic. You know, and just real quick, I just want to just talk about, you know, obviously the, the elephant in the room. We know some students made a mistake, you know, and, and obviously it had large consequences. I look upon all of these as opportunities for teachable moments. I think that there's a teachable moment for those students, for community members, for faculty. One of the things that Dr. Kio and I talked about today is we also now need to move forward and, and the kids who are involved with this, they need to be able to be given that opportunity to move forward too. So it's, it's truly my hope that there isn't backlash towards them. If there is, there should not be. Mistakes have been made prior to these events. Mistakes will be made after these events. Unfortunately, it's the nature of adolescence. Now it's a much higher stake and I appreciate and understand that. And trust me, nobody was more frustrated and disappointed than, than Ms. Keegan and I. But we want to make sure that all of our kids have the opportunity to experience a great school year. So I'm just really imploring the community members to pass along to their kids. We now need to move forward. We have, we have a good plan in place. Hopefully lessons were learned and that we can now move forward and educate our kids and have a great experience. So with that, I will turn it back to the Chair and be happy to answer any questions that you have about my report or anything to do with the high school.
Thank you so much, Mr. Smith. You know, speaking as a, as an N of one, parent of one student, I, I can say that he also reported a remarkably wonderful first day of school. And just had a huge smile on his face and, and had been engaged all day in, in like real stuff. And, you know, so thank you to everybody who, who turned on a dime and changed their expectations and really made the first day special for all our kids. I think that's pretty huge. What, and, and to all, all of you guys, this has been a tough week and a tough weekend, certainly. And you know, we, we, we live here together and we work here together and we need to move forward. And I, I do hope that, um, you know, we move forward smarter and with a deeper understanding that, you know, our actions don't just impact us and, and all those lessons. So thank you for, for your understanding. What questions do folks have? Anne?
Thank you, Maggie. Thanks, Mr. Smith. I first really, really like to point out quickly, you touched on it, John. Thank you to those who put together this schedule. Cause I know that it was a long process to figure out a schedule that worked, but to have one that we could go, that's the same for hybrid and remote. We knew it would be valuable. We had no idea how valuable. So thank you. Thank you, those who put that together. My question for you, John, is I know there's so much going on and so much on your plate and the teachers have so much going on, but I'd love to hear a little bit. Scott mentions it in his report and I'd love to hear a little bit about what's going on at the high school in terms of our commitment to discuss inclusiveness, equity and social change.
Yeah. Excellent, excellent question, Ms. Hovey. So some of it came up in some of our faculty meetings and certainly with our department chairs as well. And I know, for example, in social studies, Mr. Hickey has done a tremendous amount of work this spring and this summer outlining a lot of resources and pieces that he wishes and wants his department to roll out in through their curriculum, both at the beginning to address it, because I think it's, albeit can be a challenging topic with teens. It's so vital that we talk about it and not just sweep it under the rug and not say, well, you know, we teach something different because it really is important. So you're, the children in the district, in the high school in particular, are going to certainly be hearing it through their social studies curriculum. They're also going to be hearing it through their English curriculum. The English Department Chair Gretchen Donahue spent a good bit of time this past spring looking at new texts and new readings and some of her summer professional development was focused with her other department members around that. So it's going to be ingrained through the curriculum all the way through, but at the very beginning of the school year, the majority of that's going to be coming through social studies and then also through some of the programming that we'll be doing during our flex block on Wednesdays, once we kind of get things going. So we've had a lot of conversations at the leadership level as well with Dr. Kio and Ms. McCoy, Ms. Monique. And it certainly is a priority of ours, the social, emotional wellbeing of our kids and then the cultural responsiveness I have identified as the two top goals for the high school to focus on. You know, the, the, obviously delivering the curriculum and using the technology and the tools, but that's kind of a given, you know, that's what we do. The two primary focus areas will be those two areas that I just spoke of.
Thanks. Other questions? All right. Mr. Smith, thank you very, very much. Thank you for a wonderful beginning. Hopefully it's all, all smooth sailing from here.
That's right. Thank you for your, your support and we always feel as though we are well resourced and given the tools and I can't think of a spring and a summer where we weren't given more opportunities to enhance our abilities as teachers and educators. So thank you.
You're very, for, for whatever part we've played in it, you're very welcome, but, but thank you. Mr. Kallett, the headmaster's report from the middle school. I think you got unmute, Scott. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Sharon, Dr. Kio and the rest of the committee. One thing I would request is in the future, I can go before Beth and Andrew and John, or at least one of them. I think in listening to Beth's report, I have a wife who loves cooking shows and I would put Beth in there as a, an iron chef of educators. What she did for us since March and, and not to slight Dr. Kio, but she was the, she was the ringleader in putting all this together. We have, she showed you the slide of the 10 days and all that. And it was a, it was a puzzle that she spent countless hours putting together with her and the Teaching and Learning Committee. Just kudos to them. It made our opening just, today was fantastic. It was one of the highlights of, I've been doing this a long time. And to say I am nervous, because I always ask kids, like, are you going to be, are you nervous for the first day of school? Their answer is yes. And like, I'm like, that's good because I am and I've been doing this for a long time. I think it's 32 or 33 years. Today was one of the best days of my career only because there was so much effort put into it by so many people. And it, it went better than I could have ever expected. Our kids came in, they were respectful, they went to their places, they, for the most part, used their stairs, you know, we dedicated stairs to each grade level. At lunch with very little prompting, they socially distanced and it, it was just very refreshing and it was fantastic to have them back in the building. So we are very, very appreciative of their efforts and our teachers and the administrators that, that made it happen. Everybody else has touched on everything. I think it's important that I recognize Dave Bonavir and the custodial staff, the middle school for what they did to get our building ready and, and move every, almost every teacher moved their classroom. Over the past two days, we've handed out over almost 500 Chromebooks and it was seamless. It was just, it was a great, great day. So I can, I can answer any questions. A lot of great stuff went in. We have a great report from our, our staff. So I do thank Anna Hurley. Without her, it would have been, I would have had many sleepless evenings. So kudos to her.
Well, it, it seems like you and, and Ms. Hurley make a good team. Definitely. Yeah. Definitely seeing the messaging coming out of the middle school and you know, you, you guys have done a lot of work to get a big adjustment underway, especially knowing that these students had limited opportunity to come, you know, do their normal tours of the middle school to have, you know, such a successful day is really a huge accomplishment. So thank you to you and Anna and until the whole team of everybody who, who was doing that work today and, and will do it for the rest of the week. I'm especially impressed with the distribution of all of the Chromebooks and all the things that go to set them up so that the kids could be ready to learn. It's, it's a huge, it's a huge project and, and to know that it went well is really exciting. Other questions from the members? All right.
We're great today.
Yes. Well, really, we, we, I, I understand that you, you and John might have the opportunity to, to slip away after this. And I do hope that you take that opportunity and that you take some time this evening to get a good night's sleep. Because you know, it's, it's a whole new adventure, you know, the rest of this week. So we, we cannot say enough to both of you gentlemen, how much your leadership and, and the endless, endless hours of work that have taken to get this ship off the ground mean to us. And, and we noticed and we noticed that of all your faculty as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving forward, next item on our agenda is the warrant report.
Yes. So in your packet this evening, I'm going to look at this as the closer of fiscal year 20. So you have the remaining warrants that you haven't seen since your June 4th meeting in your packet tonight. When you meet in October, I'll give you the July 1st through September 30th or so warrants for your packet. But I, I figured I would just leave everything as of June 30th this evening. So as always, they're here at central office. If you ever want to review them in detail, otherwise know that one of your committee members, usually either Anne or Maggie, come in and sign them as they're prepared.
Thank you. And Dawn, you're up also next. We're looking at the FY 20 closeout and then the FY 21 operating and capital updates.
Exactly. So your, your fiscal year 20 closeout actually looks pretty similar if you had your June 4th packet in front of you as to where we left last time when we presented financials. As you know, there were a lot of things that happened this year, a lot of unusual transactions and obviously with the closure in, in March. But we are ending the year in a good place. And as far as revenues, it's, it's everything, you know, nothing really changed since the last time we met in June. Remember we had favorable Chapter 71 reimbursement. For the first time ever, we got 84% reimbursement rate, which probably will be at the top of the board and maybe never, ever matched again for a while. We're still waiting to see what 20 is going to be, but that was, that was great news for us. That gave us about almost $85,000 more than we anticipated. And as you know, the school committee voted to move that over to the Regional Transportation Fund. And that will serve multiple purposes for the coming year, not knowing what's going to come out of the state for reimbursement at this point. So it's nice to have a little bit of that cushion. Knowing also that our transportation expense in our end of the year report, which is what sets the reimbursement for this year, is a little understated because we didn't experience all of our transportation contracts. So we will see probably by the time we meet in October, I think they anticipate potentially having the cherry sheets out for Chapter 71 and we'll be a little, we'll have a little better picture of how that's going to play out. And so really, if you discount the, the coaching stipend or the, the athletic fees that are offset by the coaching stipends, our revenues were right, really at budget, about $20,000, $28,000 surplus. On the expenditure side, that's where we sort of have a large number, but as we know, some of that was planned, some of it was unplanned. The $1,187 is, consists of almost $400,000 in salaries. And that's what, we had been reporting a fairly large salary variance throughout the year due to some budget, post-budget staffing changes, some positions that were unfilled during the year. And then bring the closure into that and you have the spring coaches, coaching stipends, we didn't expend along with custodial overtime and substitute costs that we just didn't have any occurrence for after March 13th. Again, as you know, we used 277,000 of transportation reimbursement monies from last year, this year, which again, all falls to your bottom line this year. And then we saved over 116,000 on our transportation contract with the closure of school. We've been reporting throughout the year positive savings from our healthcare. And that was a lot to do with enrollment, how the enrollment landed versus where, what we had budgeted. And we also sort of left that higher increase that we had for premiums. And if you remember, I think it was 1% less, but we just left that in there as a plan savings for plan changes, which we didn't have to utilize. We also had some savings on workers comp premiums, a little bit lower Medicare tax. And then we had a savings also in our employee retirement benefits mainly from enrollment. And we did not take into account in the budget the savings that we were going to get in the cost share that we're starting to roll because remember that's the money that we're going to use to fund OPEB. So we consciously did not reduce the budget for that. Other than that, there were some other significant, or the other significant variances where if you look at a combination of our classroom in general, supplies and athletics, we saved about $75,000 due to the closure. We did have a negative variance in maintenance of buildings. I think as I've been reporting all year, we did have a lot of HVAC repairs that exceeded what we had in our reserve. I think other than that, we really, if you take, take account, take it, take into account the transportation and the employee benefit cost, that was about 80% of what you're seeing in your operating variance of the 796,000. So really the summary of results. And I think the easiest thing to do that is I did a roll forward again. I updated that for the E and D. So if you take the, and I try to tie everything in for you. So if you take your certified E and D as of June 30th, 2019, you'll see how you roll forward ED as you take your revenue surplus. So you can see the $28,041. You take your operating surplus, you add that to your certified E and D. Then as you recall, the school committee voted to use E and D for several different items this coming year. One was your fiscal year 21 capital projects. So we used $575,000 for that. Your initial budget in March, we approved 175,000 to be used towards your fiscal year 21 budget. And then in June, when we met again, given the circumstances of the state budget, we allocated another 200,000. And then as we've already discussed, we did put the 85,000 into the Regional Transportation Fund. So given that, So given that, we used a lot of our surplus for various other needs of the, the region, but looking at your E and D as of June 30th, it is about 5.39% of your allowed E and D, so there is a potential after we go through the Department of Revenue certification, that there's $100,000 to give back to the two towns for the operations of fiscal year 20.
Thank you, Dawn, for walking us through that.
I'm not polluted.
Well, I mean, it's, it's not, but it's just, it needs steps to, to walk through it. What questions do people have, concerns, thoughts? Mine's Anne.
I'd always be the first one to have questions.
Your hand is up, it's okay.
Thank you, John. Can you just clarify quickly that, so the chapter 70 shortfalls is predicted for this year based on the reduced cost of last year? Is that also, do we also cover not just the include, reduced cost, knowing that this year will be back up to where it was previously plus the new contract, so it's more? Does that also include the possible potential for reduced percentage of reimbursement?
So exactly, yeah, there's a lot, so you're talking chapter 71, your, your, your transportation reimbursement, correct? Right, right, so that is, it, it just, it sort of just keeps rolling, I think what we're going to find this year is we're already going to have a little bit of savings from these eight days that we're not using our bus contract. So we're still, I mean, I still, I think it's still unclear how transportation is going to roll for this year and how much reimbursement we need to cover what we have, right? Because we, we may not be fully, we may not have our full transportation cost this year. And so that will help a little bit if we're going to get lower reimbursement based on what last year was. But the, the 85,000 was going to put us close, I think, to being whole if we were getting about 70% reimbursement. And 70% reimbursement is used to be the standard. This 84% was actually an outlier. Where we're going to be though, in that 70, is, is could be even in the 60s. So that's where it's just sort of hard to see how it's all going to fall out. But where I, I don't, I think we should be, okay, the 85,000 was, was definitely going to give us potentially the cushion we needed to make it through if everything else held, stayed, held, uh, the same.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's very complicated, because it's, now you're spanning basically almost like three years, because it's
Yeah.
Last year.
I know, in a, in a normal year, it's fine, it's just when you have these anomalies, that's when it throws it off and it's the same thing with circuit breakers, so if you, if you remember us talking about circuit breaker, it's the same thing, your circuit breaker is from the year before. It's not, it's not necessarily going to cover what you have this year. Right, so when it's, when it gets out of line, then you may have, you may have some issues to deal with, but that's why they just recommended everyone take whatever you could to, in your budget to put it in, whatever you had excess to put it into regional transportation fund so that you were covering yourself for what was going to roll out this year.
Okay, that, that makes sense. I just want to say thank you again, Dawn, for putting us in good stead, I have to say that that the fact that we are, well, the, we had the money to put aside, that we had the wherewithal to roll things over as, as possible, I think that that's, I appreciate all of that and all your thought and effort that went into that, so thank you.
Thank you, and I will point this in your statements for June 30th, I forgot to mention this, is that remember we did do the half a million dollars for OPEB funding and so I did reflect that at the bottom of the statement, we sort of treated it as a separate transaction last year because we put it on towards the end and we didn't have to assess the towns for it, so I kept it clean and just left it at the bottom, but do know that that transaction did take place both as a transfer in of revenues from community ed and then a, an expenditure and that we actually did make our first contribution to the OPEB trust fund.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Anne, were you done? You were done, okay, Michael?
Dawn, were you done?
Yes, no, I was just going to say, were there any more questions? I had some other things, but I was, was going to just do the statements first.
Okay, some of the, the positive variances that we had last year, for example, the net metering and some of the, the employee benefits. Have those been captured in, in this year's budget or was the projection based on, since it went back some time, well, I, I guess the other way is, are, are we expecting to perhaps have some positive variances there that may make up for other shortfalls, funding shortfalls?
Right, so the net metering, it's always there if, to cover us, like the 20, the 23,000 to cover us. We, we do not reduce our budget for that, we've been using it to cover other things and so we're continuing to do that. In the last two years, we've sort of used that to offset our extra spending in maintenance. And, and so we're leaving that in there and not taking the reduction for those credits, so it will always be an extra for us until we decide to operate otherwise. But it will never be, like, if, you know, the first year or two, we were, we weren't sure what the number was going to be, but we've been holding pretty steady now in the low twenties.
And on some of the other, the employee benefits?
The employee benefits, yeah, so we probably definitely reduced, if you remember, we really didn't see another, we didn't see an increase again in our, in our health insurance from 20 budget to 21 budget because I am using some of that extra that we had, it helped cover the cost. And then remember, we will, you'll probably stop seeing the employee benefit for the retirees be an excess cost because we are going to start contributing that to the OPEB fund, so we had set aside $100,000 and then anything extra that's in this account can also be contributed to the OPEB fund, so that is our plan there that there won't, you won't see, you'll see a zero if everything goes correctly on that statement, because everything that we can, that savings in that arena, we will transfer over to the OPEB fund.
Thank you.
Other questions?
So, so just to, just to continue on, in your packet too, was the special revenue revolving funds of June 30th and that's where you will see your OPEB trust fund and you'll see athletic revolving fund looks healthy, I, we put all the hockey co-op payments into the fund because we had availability of funding in the general fund, so that's starting to build a little bit of a savings account for something that comes down the road in the athletic world. The co-op that was generating the most sort of student athletic fees was the girls' hockey and we're no longer the host of that, so we will not be seeing that again, where we will be paying into the co-op versus the co-op towns paying us, so that will be one change. We've also, you'll note that we have a, a large balance of athletic fees sort of collected most of our families in the spring, rather than have us cut checks back to them, rolled it into the fall and so once we know who is doing fall sports, the money will be transferred from the athletic revolving fund into your general fund to go against your athletic fees and your, your revenue line item. So that will hopefully dissipate that balance by the time we figure out what's happening with fall. Just to let the committee know, we are working on our end of the year report for DESI, it's due October 1st, although I will say there's a lot of chatter to give a statewide extension for that because no one's had a whole lot of time to actually close their books and get those reports done, but as of today, I haven't seen that, so we'll definitely get the regions done, where an, an extension would be really helpful, helpful for us is for our two locals. Because unfortunately, the way we're set up, we do three end of the year reports, so I don't think we'll have a problem getting the region done. But I'd love that extension for the two towns. And then we're staying right on schedule and our auditors are scheduled to be here. Not this week, but next week and we will move along and see how that goes, so we have everything in place for that and we're looking forward to hopefully a smooth audit and we're probably going to bring the audited financial statements to the committee in January. Every year, if I say December, we never make it, so I'm just going to say January this year so that we can say we're on time. So anything else on fiscal year 20, because then I will give you some verbal updates about fiscal year 21?
No, I, I guess I, I was wondering a little bit to piggyback on the whole question about the transportation, I, I just, I'm worried a little bit, like, not next year, but the year after, like, if we this year have you know, while we're, Mike, do you understand what I'm getting at? Like, I'm a little worried that, that there's like a can that's going to come to bite us eventually when we go back to full-time school and we have like the prior year with that. How should I be thinking, we should, how should we be thinking about that?
Right, so I think that's where we'll either, you know, we will be conservative, so what we'll do is you won't, you'll, you'll underestimate your chapter 71 revenue so that you'll make sure that you're making it up for probably in assessments, right? Because that, that chapter, that revenue reduces what the towns have to pay for assessments, so there could be one year where we're short and we can plan for that, all we need to do is, was know and I think by the end of next year or when we're doing the budget for this, well, I just said, it may take us a couple of years to figure this out, but you can be conservative to cover yourself. And rather than having money put into, into a regional transportation fund, we may have to increase the assessments to cover us until we can get that makeup.
Okay, thanks. Looking at 21.
So I'm happy to report and you may have, yeah, obviously you've put the pieces of the puzzle together, but we do have an approved budget as of August 15th, so we are off the 112th DESI budget, which is very exciting, so the assessment payments that we received today are actually the original assessment payments that we should have received plus the makeup for July and August, so where we were short because the 112th budget, as you know, was based on our fiscal year 20 budget. So as of today, we're back whole to where we should be and then we will move forward in October with the regular assessments as they were originally set up back in March. The good news also is that if you read the news, the chapter 70, they, the state has made a concentrated effort to maintain local aid at the fiscal year 20 levels and then added a little bit. So we did not see the decrease in fiscal year 20, or fiscal year 21, chapter 70, that we were all told potentially was going to happen. If you remember, in June, I reported to you that they said not only are you not going to see any of the increase that you saw in 21, you're going to see a decrease over fiscal year 20. Therefore, that's why we added the extra 200,000. I'd estimated that based on their numbers, we could be short as much as 3 to 350,000, so we didn't go that drastic, we did the 200,000. But as it all is shaking out right now, we're only short about 30, I think it's a little, less than 40,000. And so that is good news, that means that we've got a little cushion in our budget because we assumed it was going to be greater, so that if we run into some other operating issues with COVID that we run out of funds for, the region already has some extra money in their budget that they wouldn't have to go to the towns for. So in a way, I think it's worked out fairly well. You, you just, we, you know, the, the DESI, I will say, was shocked when the governor's budget came out, so I think everyone was very pleasantly surprised, but I think they also want to make sure that education doesn't take a hit for what's going on and so they, they dug deep, what this is going to do to us in '22? Who knows, but for at least '21, we're looking pretty good. I wanted to just update you guys too on, so the largest CARES grant that we received is what they're calling the reopening grant and if you remember, we're getting $225 per pupil. So for the region, that's just slightly under 280,000 and I was just going to give you a little background on to how we've spent it to date, just so that if you get questions from townspeople or other school committee members, you sort of know what we're doing. So to date, we've spent a little over, or a little under $80,000 on technology. As you heard Beth talk about, all the educators at the region do have their new laptops, so at the region, that was really the primary technology that we had to acquire because you've done, you did the one-to-one for the middle school, which was a huge blessing in disguise. It really limited the additional devices that we had to procure in order to make our students have availability of access, or, or access to devices at home, so that was, that worked out really well for us because a lot of other districts are spending almost this whole amount of money just on technology devices for their staff and students. We've, we've incurred or already spent about $65,000 on PD. You can tell from Beth's presentation that we did a lot of PD this summer, it was a combination of paying fees for teachers to take courses, we had paid people to actually do PD for us and then obviously we gave our teachers ample number of workshop days, so they felt like they had the time to do it. So that's what you're, you're coming up with your 65,000. To date, we spent about $25,000 on PPE. About $20,000 on facility items, which is the cost of your tent rentals, our medical tents and those type of items and then for contracted services, about we've incurred about $15,000 to date and that's predominantly for the HVAC study we're doing and the concierge testing services that we just signed on for. So we've, we've utilized about 200,000 of the $280,000 to date. The other items that we had budgeted for was for additional staffing, a floating nurse, you know, additional backup that we need here, so we're waiting to see how that's all going to play out, obviously with school just starting. Those are still to come. The note, you have to make, the important piece of this to know is that we have to spend the money by December 31st. That's when the grant ends, so we're making sure that we utilize this fully. And then leave the other funds that don't have to be used so quickly available to us for after December 31st.
Thank you. Questions, questions regarding FY 21? Michael?
Any projected red flags?
I know, Adrian and I were talking about that today. So far, we really lucked out, we don't have, all of our teachers fell into place. I would say the region is, is in really good shape, the one thing that we had to do just to sort of see, just so you can understand where we're seeing this in other areas, at the elementary, where we're doing the remote schoolhouse, we did have to hire additional teachers. You, the way your remotes working here, your hybrid remote model, being, having them incorporated into the rooms, the classrooms that are already taking place really prevented us from having to hire a lot of additional staffing, so I think we're providing high-quality education without diluting our teaching staff with having just to bring in long-term subs. So I think that's been very favorable for the region. We're still looking for some educational assistance, so that has, they're not fully online yet and we're waiting to see how that plays out, so that could be one area where we could have to pick up a couple of extra people just to see how that's going to play out and we're waiting to see how much additional nursing staffing we're going to need. I think, you know, until we sort of get up and running and understand what a day is going to look like on campus, it's hard to say how much additional nursing staffing we may need here. So there's a couple of things that we're playing around with. If you remember, we were pretty conservative at the end of last year. I did roll over some grant monies for special ed, our title one, our title, a little bit of title two, so that we had a little bit of a safety net. So I feel comfortable at this point that we have what we need and we can afford to have a couple of unexpected things and still be okay. I think the biggest I know right now is if there's going to be any I think the biggest unknown right now is if there's going to be any recommendations for us for HVAC improvements and what that will entail. The, but the, I will, I will throw out there though, that the one thing we're still exploring is if you've heard about the municipal CARES funding that the towns get that the region didn't. I'm still working with both the towns to see if the region can have some access to those funds, which would help us maybe be able to reclass some of the monies that we've already used for our CARES grant to the towns and free up, if we need to, for other things. So I think we've got a lot of options, so I'm not losing sleep over the financial situation at all as of tonight. I can't say that tomorrow, but as of tonight.
And, and Dawn, that, the, the town CARES funds doesn't have the same tail as the school does?
No, it does. December 30th, yes. And they haven't done their second round yet, so that's why we're letting, I'm letting everything settle on our end before, and that way they can settle on their end, the next round of applications to actually have the funds released as of the end of, in, end of September.
Thank you. If I could just add, Maggie, one of the things that, that's become really clear to me when I talk with area superintendents is that we have managed this in a way that is extraordinarily less expensive than some of our neighboring communities. And I don't know if it was just good fortune or the way we operate in general, but we're in a much, much better position. I don't think we're going to have any of those huge surprises, barring the unforeseen such as HVAC. But in terms of staffing, again, credit goes to the folks who are able to work things out at their buildings and come up with creative solutions. And one of those is obviously the remote, the remote allowing teachers to teach remote because we didn't have to hire replacements, as you discussed in your previous meetings. So we're in a, we're in a good position and I'm thankful for that.
Well, well, that, us too. And, and I think that, you know, also the willingness of our faculty and of our administrators to be flexible to hear, you know, Mr. Smith is doing some proctoring and Ms. Keegan and, you know, everybody. And I think that on the flip side, that allowing some of our remote students to participate in the actual classes that are happening here isn't something that's been able to work in all communities. But I, I know many of our constituents asked very directly for the opportunity to do that because their kids have to be remote for various reasons. That it really gives them a chance to be part of our community and not off into, you know, a different program somewhere else. And, you know, I know that takes flexibility on the part of the faculty to be sort of willing to open up to that. And it's, it's, you know, a little bit unwieldy. And so I want to say I'm grateful to them, that, that folks are able to sort of give and take and be flexible so that we can try and make this work for everybody. And, you know, certainly to the extent that it has a positive impact on the bottom line. That's, that's pretty huge too, and appreciated by all the taxpayers, I'm sure.
Well put, and I couldn't agree more that our faculty has stepped up in agreeing to, to work with our remote students. Without their cooperation, this could never happen, and it is challenging. But I do think that, as Beth said, the 10 days, the opportunities to practice it has really been helpful. And the feedback that I received today was that it went better than they expected. They found tricks to make it work, which is awesome. So really happy about that and appreciative.
And, and you know, I think also, to the extent that we're asking our community to really pay attention to kids' health and to make sure they're not sending kids to school that are like, you know, just like a little unwell, that it really makes a difference if it means that child would have an opportunity to participate in class. You know, like they're feeling like just a little unwell, but I could power through the day. I, I think that having that as a possibility really changes the game a little bit in terms of hopefully people making decisions that are going to protect one another's health in the community. So I'm really grateful about that. All right, well, thank you for all of the really delightfully careful and prudent work that gets done to make sure that our budgets are in, in a reasonable state. Because I know that isn't, as, as Dr. Kio alluded to, that is not the case in all of our various neighborhoods and neighbors. And, you know, it's certainly very noticed and appreciated from here and we feel fortunate. All right, moving on, we are moving on to our consent agenda. We have a set of minutes from our meeting on August 14th, 2020. Do, do I have any questions or concerns about those? Can I take a motion to accept the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the minutes from August 14th?
So moved.
Anne Hovey, motion by Anne Hovey. Do I have a second?
Lynn Collins, second.
Second by Lynn Collins. Do I have any discussion? Fantastic. If you could take yourself off mute, we will do a roll call vote. Michael Jaffe?
Michael Jaffe, yes.
Anne Hovey?
Anne Hovey, yes.
Lynn Collins?
Collins, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Kate Potter?
Kate Potter, yes.
And Maggie Sharon, yes. Fantastic. The next two items on our agenda, which are in your packet and for anyone, I do notice that our, our audience is kind of dwindled a little bit. But for anybody who is still kicking along at home, in the packet, which is available on the website, is our 2021 School Committee Meeting schedule. That's a schedule that includes both the, you know, regional school committee meetings as well as our periodic joint school committee meetings and, and the local ones as well. I do know that it's possible, especially due to our ongoing superintendent search, that we may need to add some joint school committee meetings. So just for members' information, just keep your calendar handy. We'll try to be efficient about that. Anne, did you want to add anything to that?
I'm just saying we're definitely adding. Sorry.
Just plan on spending more quality time with us and we'll let you know when that might be at the most, as soon as, as possible. I also circulated today and attempted to attach to the packet, if anybody is looking for it, all of our subcommittee assignments. I believe that those are set. Michael, I did get your volunteer to be a second liaison to, I don't have it in front of my head, but I will say yes to that. Thank you. I have your message from earlier today and, and I will get that attached to the packet. I know when speaking with Cheryl this afternoon, she was afraid to possibly blow it up by adding something after. So that will, that will come out for anyone looking for subcommittees. And just, Dr. Kio, do we need to reach out to the folks who we liaise with? Or do they typically reach out to us, especially for a new member on a subcommittee?
It depends on the subcommittee. So for example, policy subcommittee is usually spearheaded by one of your representatives. Whereas if it's a subcommittee that I'm running, then yes, I would reach out to you guys.
Okay, so I think with that, that is sort of our last, last item. Looking forward to October, if there are particular items that you would like to see added to the agenda, please reach out to me in the next couple of, you know, next week or so. Otherwise, you know, we're, we're gonna, a little bit play it by ear in the sense that we don't know exactly what the next couple of weeks are going to hold. So we'll need to, to, you know, be responsive to that. And then we do have sort of our annual list of things that we go through and, and we'll be looking towards in October as well. Do we have any further questions or comments before we adjourn for the night? Great. To all of the school folks still sitting on this call, thank you, thank you, thank you for everything that you did for us all summer long and especially in the last two weeks and for today. And fingers crossed and with the good, goodwill of all of our students and their families and all of our faculty, we will be able to move forward in a healthy, safe way to be in school as much as possible in the weeks to come. Do I have any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Judy Miller, do I have a second?
Anne Hovey, second.
Great, Anne Hovey, second. Any discussion? Fantastic. Lynn Collins?
Collins, yes.
Kate Potter?
Kate Potter, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Michael Jaffe?
Michael Jaffe, yes.
And Anne Hovey?
Anne Hovey, yes.
And Maggie Sharon, yes. And with that, we are adjourned at 8:13 PM. Thank you.